Good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, April 24th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Select meeting. We do have an executive session on the agenda, but that's no longer required, so we're gonna skip over that. Want you to know this meeting will be recorded and will be available on our website, on the YouTube page. Okay, so moving on to Agenda Item 2. This is meeting minutes from 3:28, 2023. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from 3:28, 2023.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Agenda Item 3, we have a road opening permit for 40 Chipaway Road from Bryant Hills Farm, Inc. And I know there was a water issue there. Is this the one?
I have to recuse myself from any discussion on this.
Yep. So I have no issues with it. They focused in have water, so need to open up the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Alright, great. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the road opening permit for 40 Chipaway Road from Bryant Hills Farm, Inc.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's weird not doing the roll call.
I know.
It feels strange. Okay, Agenda Item 4, this is the related to the electrical aggregation contract. And Luann, you are the expert on this. You wanna just give us a quick?
So currently, 25 towns in our area are grouped all together in this electrical aggregational group, where we get a discounted rate by choosing a collective vendor to deliver the electricity. Currently, it's Constellation Energy. And I know Lola had checked today for a resident. Constellation Energy was .10 per kilowatt today, and Eversource was .26. So it was a big sizable difference, but it's gone out to bid. And there are two, Good Energy and Constellation, that will put in bids, and we need authorization for the interim town administrator to cast the vote for the town to be part of this project again.
Perfect. And I think this, obviously, there's huge savings that come with this program, so I think, I don't see any issues with us continuing it. Any additional discussion?
No, absolutely not.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to authorize interim town administrator to vote and execute contracts on behalf of the town of Free Town for electrical aggregation.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Lynn used admin has another meeting at 6:00, and then she was gonna come over.
Okay, so we'll come back to this one. Don't let me forget that. Alright, now, Agenda Item 6 is related to a lease agreement for a dump truck with All American Investment Group.
So this was at the last annual town meeting. Annual town meeting. It was approved to enter into a lease agreement, four-year lease agreement, to purchase an international dump truck for the highway department. It has taken us over a year to actually secure the truck. It's coming. So I need to do all the paperwork to actually put the lease agreement together, so that's what this is.
Alright, that makes sense. Any discussion on this?
Do we have to equip it further, or was that all part of the?
No, it's coming in in June, and then it will probably be January before we actually receive it, because yeah, it will have to be fitted according to the specs that.
I was hopeful that, based on the dino, with the way everything, how slow everything is now, but I was hopeful that you were saying that the reason why it was being so slow was because it was being equipped.
No.
Wishful thinking.
The price, I mean, so like the price, whatever we got authorized, we're still within that same preference.
I did check, and it's still that, it's still the number. So that's the number, and we got the, you know, the money to go to, from the lease, All American Lease Company, the price, and we have the money in our budget, and so everything is good to go.
Alright, awesome. Okay, sounds good. So with that, so I'll entertain a motion to authorize interim town administrator to sign documents related to the lease for a dump truck from All American Investment Group's LLC.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, hold on. I messed that one up. So that, so I guess that motion will stand for Agenda Item 7, but I have to also just vote on entering the lease agreement.
Yep.
So with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve entering the lease agreement for a dump truck with All American Investment Group LLC.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good catch.
It almost felt a little weird there. Okay, moving on. Agenda Item 8, this is the contract extension for flushing manholes slash seeping pits between Town of Free Town and JRD Incorporated through 6/30, 2023.
Originally, we had thought that this would have been done in October, November, December of last year. It didn't get done, it's getting done now, so it's just an extension to the contract.
That makes sense. Any questions or concerns or comments?
No.
Do we know, do we think the second extension will cover?
Yeah, I've seen, they were out there working. I actually went on site and saw them last week, so they're working.
Alright, awesome.
Well, I guess then the only other issue is it gonna change price-wise?
No. In fact, yeah, cuz Jim Resendy's already came in and signed the extension, the original contract with the original price.
Alright, great.
I have a question.
Yep.
On, how come they're not putting one at the end of Alexander Drive? Any idea? I mean, that's a dead end too, at the end of the.
I don't, I don't know. I think it just depends on where they were putting them. There was three or four locations. I know one was on Evans, I think one was on Valley, where they designated them as where they need to flush those.
I'm like, it's at a dead end there too, and they don't.
Does it loop around there, or is it dead-ended? It may loop around.
I don't really know the thing, dude. I just know it ends at High Street, so it doesn't. I don't, I don't, I have no idea whether it loops around or not, but I thought.
Does it loop back to Main Street, though? I'd have to find out from the water department. Like, if it loops down Alexander and back to Main, then you're not gonna have the same issue that we have up the shores.
Back to Main, it would have to go up Alexander and all the way back down the other side of it?
No, it has to, it can go up Alexander and then down, like, down to Main. I don't know if it loops around.
It ends right at High Street. It doesn't go out on High Street.
I can ask them.
Just wondering, I'm like.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I would ask the water commissioners.
You're on the spotlight.
Okay. Alright, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract extension for flushing manholes slash seeping pits between Town of Free Town and JRD Incorporated through 6/30, 2023.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is Agenda Item 9. This is for ARPA funds for the purchase of a tractor for water and sewer?
Yeah, so the water department, you know, when they have a break or they have to do work around the water lines, they need a backhoe or a tractor to dig up the line. Currently, they have to farm all that work out to a contractor, so they were looking to buy a piece of equipment, and ARPA funds would cover it.
Okay. And 35 grand will cover it?
Yeah, they had two quotes. I know one was like 20-something, and the other one was probably around 30, so I said, well, put 35, just to make sure you can get.
Yeah.
That's for a brand-new piece of equipment, or, yeah?
Yeah.
So it's just a smaller?
Yeah, it's a small, like, backhoe type thing, but like a little John Deere tractor-type thing that, and apparently, they can operate it, so.
I was just, my next question, have they licensed to operate it?
They said they can do it, so. I meant to call Chuck Macumber today to see if, cuz I'm sure he could operate it, you know what I mean? If they needed help. I know in Hanson, the water department owned the backhoe, but the highway department would borrow it or use it or help them with it too, you know what I mean?
Alright. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to utilize $35,000 in ARPA funds for the purchase of a tractor and, sorry, for a tractor for water and sewer.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving on. So next, Agenda Item 10, we have the application for the Excel Recycling LLC drunk dealer's license effective 5/1, 2023 through 4/30, 2024. Alright. So in the agenda, we do have the list of complaints that we've received since having that complaint line, which I know we have been addressed, or, you know, at least these are, currently have a system, right, and a process to track these and to, you know, investigate when possible. Yes, any kind of comments or concerns, or how do you wanna talk about this?
So the only thing I will say is that one thing that actually surprises me when this is in front of me is that there was more complaints of smell than I would have thought.
Yeah, air and smell, noise and smell.
Which is obviously tough to pinpoint, right, but it's something I would have thought it was gonna be more of the noise slash explosion-type complaints, which, you know, there is some of those, obviously, but it's, that one, I just kinda stood out to me, so.
Same thing, Jared. I looked at those, and I looked at the recent litigation, that was that Brayden Point with the air and noise complaints that they received. So I guess my, maybe amend this if the board. Recently, in the previous meeting, we all decided to approve a contractor to go out and do environmental studies, and within a six-month period, we should have some reports back, right? Deb stepped in, if, I think within six months, we should have something back from that company.
I would assume so.
And since the majority of their complaints is smell and noise, I think that would address some of those complaints. Instead of a one-year, I suggest or make a motion to make it a six-month, in the event that the report comes back in six months from that company that says something there to first bite on to, that we have more power to remove this if needed. Instead of the one-year, it just removes any logistical hurdles down the road, in my opinion.
I mean, I think regardless if we find something that's gonna happen, that they're gonna, that we have to go after them legally, we're gonna have those hurdles regardless, so.
Yeah, that's the way, like, nothing's changed. I think we're doing a better job as a town of capturing this stuff and documenting it, and, you know, creating a kind of a fact pattern, right? I think we're definitely taking the right step by getting that testing done, right? So we, there can be some kind of baseline set, right? Even when we set a baseline, one of the, you know, truths of the situation is that, to, you know, think about, you know, from a legal standpoint, to prove where that's coming from, it's gonna be, it'll always be an uphill battle.
Exactly, yeah. That was gonna be one of my next points, is that we're getting a baseline at this point, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean. I think as.
Yeah, no, I agree with the, regardless of what the report gives us, it will be an uphill battle to go to the next step. But I think one less hurdle for us would be having to have another six-month on the license. In case something comes back so drastic that we need to take immediate action, having a six-month review versus an entire year would give us a little bit more teeth and ability to take further action versus allowing them to proceed another six months.
I thought there was something in place that said that, like, if they were doing something, can't we, didn't we have the right to pull the license?
I couldn't find anything when I was reviewing it.
You do if you had something concrete. I think the other piece of this, we have, where we have a new elected board of health, that the board of health will always have the power to shut something down or the authority to shut something down if it's creating nuisance, you know, our health hazard. And so the board of health, the new board of health, will have that power, and they also, they're the ones that are overseeing this new, the testing. So I think if there was something that came back, you know, that was the concrete, then the board of health would have the authority to shut them down.
And of course, what you're saying, what you're saying makes sense to me. My issue being that it's still, we're making assumptions based on, you know, things that we don't have proof of yet, right? And we're setting up a kind of, I think, like, if I was on their side of it, I'd be like, well, you're just giving me a six-month contract rather than the year that I applied for because you think that something is true, when you don't know it's true, right? But without any kind of hard evidence yet? I think that might be setting us up to kind of putting us down a road where we're not looking like we're, you know, being, you know, open-minded and.
No, being open-minded is giving them the six-month review. You know, we're looking at, over the past few years, we've been looking at for additional evidence, if that's what you wanna call it. And this contract that we just signed with the consulting firm, or the environmental firm, I should say, is to sit there and give us an unbiased review of the everyday life of that facility and the surrounding property. By giving us six months versus the year, if it does come back with something, not only will the board of health have something to do as far as shutting it down with their new authority, but also this board of selectmen here, cuz we're appointing them the license itself to operate a business in town. So having both in place gives us an additional edge and area on the side of caution. That's what this is, area on the side of caution versus any finger-pointing of the facility.
Yeah, I mean, I guess to Deb's point, if board of health says, okay, this is a nuisance and a health hazard, and they can shut them down, then what's the point of us doing it in six months, right? Because if they come and find something in four months, five months, seven months from now that's that bad, then the board of health shuts them down. So it really, the license doesn't matter, it's trivial at that point, whether it's six months or a year, so to change it. And I think, kinda back to Trevor's point, that it almost looks like we're being negative, is it, you know, everyone always talks about being a good neighbor from both sides, right?
Yeah.
We look like we're not being good neighbors by saying, nope, we're only giving you six months rather than a year, so. I don't, that's just my true sense, I don't know.
No, no, it's, everyone's got entitled to their opinion, their voice. I'll always support and listen and work with everybody on this board. It's just, in my head, I'm looking at it going, right, we're not really finger-pointing, we're just being cautious for the, for the community, right? At the end of the day, you know, they elect us and they tell us this is what they like to see. And we've had the complaints we have received, gives us pause, right, as far as what they're looking for. So they're looking for the air quality and testing and everything else. The board of health will shut down, shut them down for, based on the facts of the findings. This is for the license to operate, which we have authority over, not the board of health. So it's two different things, so by going at it both directions, it just gives us more teeth at the end of the day.
But if they shut them down, then they can't.
Yeah, so, yeah, this is what I was concerned about too, right? So if, the license is an annual license.
Is that what the court, court documents is?
That's the other part I was concerned about, right? So I don't, I don't think we have the ability to even give a, it's an all-or-nothing type situation.
Well, we can give them the full year, but it's just a six-month review.
I mean, well, I think what Deb was saying too, and like, if in six months, if these, if you get findings that are, things, levels are outside of, you know, the DEP standard, like, then that's a different story, right? That will be brought up, you know, I'm sure it will be, that'll be closely watched.
I'm sure it will.
And then the only other thing I'm concerned, so the hours of operations for this, so it's 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and then Saturday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. I know part of the agreement we had, you know, when they do run, is it on, just on Sundays? That, that there needs to be a communication of.
No, they won't.
Only Saturdays.
They have 18 Saturdays a year. They have to notify me that they're gonna operate on Saturdays. I have not had any complaints that they're operating outside their hours.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure, that's not, there's not enough space on the application to state that? As long as we're under, understanding that this doesn't kinda supersede the existing agreement that, that we have. Okay, I just wanted, just wanna make sure, alright.
I have a question on it.
Yeah.
18 Saturdays. Who's counting them?
They are supposed to notify me if they're gonna operate. I haven't got any complaints that they're operating on Saturdays.
It'll depend on what you.
The shredder.
It'll depend on, there's just a shredder?
Just the shredder. They can do their regular.
They pile that metal up all day, all Saturday after, from Saturday morning to Saturday afternoon against that wall.
But they're not shredding, right? That's the key. It's, I think it specifically says they cannot operate the shredder.
Because the license is surrounded by their shredder, right, around their shredder?
Yeah.
Like I said, there's people dumping all day Saturday, and they're piling it against it.
I mean, I think that part of that is, we don't restrict anyone, any other companies within that industrial park for weekend use. I think the shredder is kind of a special situation, cuz it is so loud and, you know, you understand that. I think that's why it's kind of specifically a side agreement almost, you know, or part of the settlement.
Yeah, the settlement.
But, you know, if like, we can't stop trucks from going in and out, or, you know, things of that nature.
About a month ago, I had to call Kevin and have Kevin go over there to tell them they had to water things down, because the dust was so thick coming across the thing. So I'm like, and he goes, I told him, they knew they were supposed to water these things down when it gets, when it gets windy. And they just don't bother. And I mean, for the complaints, you know, everybody puts one in every now and then about the noise and about the smell and the debris flying over the wall and everything, but you know what it's like to have to come home every day and have to call? It's like, I'm not gonna call you every single day when the noise is loud like that. It's just like, after a while, it's just like, where is it going? You don't ever hear any results from anything, so it's just like, you know, it's like the DEP. The DEP won't even answer a phone call anymore from any of the residents and stuff. So it's like, and if you look what happened in Ohio with the train derailment thing there, with all that, and the DEP told all those people they could go home, it doesn't give you a one feeling.
I get it, I understand.
Can I say something? Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So this, this is the only thing I'm gonna say, is what I said last time, is here we are, the license expires, right? And you need to, they apply for a license, you vote whether or not to give them the license.
Correct.
And the bylaw, it states, have you done an inspection of the facility as the board? Or an agent of the board done an inspection of the facility prior to this?
There has been inspections, right, I think we've had people down there, right? I mean, I have personally not gone down there.
No, but we had, I mean, based on complaints, we've had people go there.
But have you done, but you're supposed to do an inspection prior to the vote tonight, and also have a hearing? Before you go.
I don't, is that still the way that?
That's on the original application for the junk dealer's license, not a renewal?
How can you differentiate when there's a whole year of impact from this facility? And there, that's the whole reason why there's a renewal for the license? Because there could very well be reason to not renew the license.
Well, we, we have had inspections. We're down there frequently. I get, when I get calls, sometimes I go and inspect myself, and I, I can honestly.
I, shouldn't you hear from the public? On, on voting for this license application? I mean, you get.
We're having an open session, I mean, that's why.
It's not a public hearing.
It's, it's not a public, but.
You haven't posted a notice, do notice of a public hearing. It says right there in the box.
Yeah, but we don't have public hearings on every, you know, license that we.
But on the junk license bylaw, that's what it demands.
On the original application, not on renewals.
It doesn't specify.
Well, that's what town council advises, we don't have to do it on a renewal.
Is that in writing somewhere? It's not in the bylaw? I mean, selectmen can make changes to the bylaw, they can establish additional rules around the bylaw, around the license, and they haven't. So I mean, that's how it's always happened in the past, right? Before every license renewal, there's always been a public hearing?
I don't probably know that.
There has been. I mean, that happened last year, but the last time, with the whole, the whole court thing.
It was a public hearing in 2018.
There was a vote, you know, there, we were in the same predicament last year. I just think you should hear from the public. I think a notice should be posted.
Yeah, I mean.
No, I didn't know that you guys hired an environmental consultant. I knew it was in the works, but I mean, I just think that there should be more communication and more discussion. You say you don't get the complaints, but we've been eight years into complaints. We're not gonna complain every day. The emissions are there, the particulate matter is there, every day. So just because someone doesn't call when it's spewing smoke, doesn't mean it's not happening.
I mean, we have, we have.
Hear from the residents.
I, I heard saying, we have, we have, the complaints we've got, we have sent, you know, investigated those complaints and kind of building up, you know, just to have a fact pattern, right, and understand where we stand and.
When was the last inspection of the facility?
We had people down there recently, like, in the last couple of weeks, right? When there was, I know there was issues of smoke, right, that was investigated. Trying to find out that was actually a controlled burn going on somewhere else, but, you know, it was, that was concerning. We sent people down for that, but is there anything you want to?
But I mean, that's for a particular complaint. I mean, the whole facility has to be inspected, you know, and really, and I don't know who's supposed to go. I mean, an agent of you guys, the board, the board, you guys yourselves, need to go down there, the board of health, whoever, and take a look around and see, are the storm drains clogged, you know, like they've been in the past? What do the piles look like? And, you know, look at the air, the air permit regulations. Those things are never covered. That stuff sits there, you know, it's like, has anyone looked at the shredder residue reports? Do they pass, you know, DEP? Are they, I mean, do they even have a CED anymore?
Mr. Chairman, to you, to our folks in the audience, so my first week on the job, my priority was making contact with them. Excuse me, Cal Bizarro Building Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
My first week here, that was been a point to reach out to them and do an inspection of the property, look at the size pile where they put in water when they were moving, throwing some material around and that thing. So we did, they gave us, gave us to inspect, they didn't say don't look here. We looked at everything. And so every time there's a complaint, I do go by there, and I investigate. Or Debbie will tell me, hey, we got a complaint, you go down, and so we are doing that. We can do more and better, but we are involved in that process. We see the complaints, they come in, and it's something we're all aware of every day, and we get a complaint. Check this out, big noise, and to the point that it was smoke, come to find out it was coming from the state forest and not them, but regardless, we go see where the smoke was, it wasn't there. We do follow up on the complaints. We could do a better job, we can always do better, but we're doing the best we can right now.
But I just still don't think it just satisfies what the bylaw requires, which is, I mean, it's simple. It's a simple bylaw with simple demands, and you, you know, I think you owe it to the public and the residents to at least follow the rules.
Alright, noted. Anything else? Okay. So that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the application for Excel Recycling's junk dealer's license effective 5/1, 2023 through 4/30, 2024.
Motion made.
I, I say nay.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you.
You didn't even hear from anybody here. I, I really, it's tough.
Yeah, you just spoke. Anyone can speak out, it's not.
Alright, so now.
Trevor, can he?
Would you say you would follow up on the complaints, is that through the email complaints, or just phone?
Both. I mean, somebody can gravely call us, we'll do the same as with the email.
I know they have a complaint line set up.
We do.
Emails, yeah, so you respond to those.
Yeah, and besides that, I drive around, you know, without notice and just kind of think around what are busy, what's going on? A lot of trucks in the area, you kind of want to sense what's the backup, why they're not taking material right now, so. Not just looking at complaints, but I try to make myself available most times. And I call them, hey, what's going on? You wanna come down? And they let us in, but again.
What about the provisions on the industrial zone bylaw? I mean, you can't even check those off. I mean, that site is a mess.
Their site is a mess where they are?
I mean, these guys aren't even supposed to see what they see at their properties.
The owners are terrible.
So you're in Alexander Drive, High Street? Yeah.
What is causing that terrible odor? I mean, it is.
The whole neighborhood.
You know, it makes one sick. You know, you've got to do something about controlling that, you know, and I think the only thing is to.
Testing. You need good information to go to court with and say, here's what we found.
I call all the time about the smell and the noise.
So it's up to us to test it?
So it's my responsibility?
No, I'm saying, if you can make a complaint about smell, we go down there and maybe look around and smell, and if we see something, we'll analyze it.
You can't keep my smell.
Sorry, folks.
You can't keep my smell.
Guys, one at a time, please. We can't hear, we can't hear everyone, one, one at a time, please.
No, I hear you.
No, you don't. You did, you'd be acting on it. It's just been going on unconsciously for an extended period of time.
I, I'm not sure, Ms. Lynn, if you heard, we did hire, we have an environmental consultant who is doing testing to set baseline. We're taking all this, you know, steps. It's going to be all, all around that area.
Mean, Main Street or High Street?
I mean, we voted on this a couple of weeks ago. Around the site, yeah.
Just the site or residential?
I mean, it's gonna be, yeah.
But if it's coming.
This is what they do, right?
On the, on the study that was done before?
So that study was not, was, I mean, was inconclusive, it was never.
It warranted further testing, that's all it did.
Okay, so we're, we're doing further testing, Leah. That's exactly what we're doing. We're trying to, we're listening to people's complaints and trying to act upon, Leah, right? Do you understand that? That's what we're trying to say. I'm not trying to be rude, but we are trying to do something so that if everyone has justified reason to say this is what's happening, we have the backing to be able to go to court with and not just say, hey, we have this inconclusive report and a bunch of people saying something, cuz that doesn't stand up in court. We're trying to make sure that we have factual information. I've been seeing that since day one. I need numbers. Numbers don't lie. We're trying to come up with numbers for whatever side. It might prove that they're contaminating everything, or they're contaminating nothing, but at least we have the numbers.
Is, is, are they going to be testing, you know, like, surrounding properties and control properties and things like that?
Yeah, those are professionals. I have no idea how environmental testing works.
Who did you hire?
I don't know.
Apex.
It's Apex, Apex.
I would like you to be more transparent about these people.
I would like you to be more transparent about these people that you have hired to do these things. I don't think we get enough of that information.
Oh, Apex is, we're not gonna hire someone that's not qualified, right, so they, they have to be qualified.
Know, I just wanna know.
Right, none of us knew.
Once we get, I'm assuming once we get the information, it will be made public, right?
I mean, it's on our agenda, I mean.
I mean, what if some, what if, what if one of us, you know, had information that we wanted to present to you, you know, and, and, and a and a hearing situation that would influence a vote perhaps? Or make you pause before you, you know, and that's what you're supposed to do. And not just on the initial application for license, they, they, every time there was a renewal application submitted, there was a hearing on that application.
I mean.
And then there was deliberation, and then there was a vote, sometimes the deliberation would go on for a week or two, and then they would vote, so, I mean, for you guys to not have a hearing and to not do an inspection specifically on the application.
But if town council's telling us we don't have to, then that's what we're gonna, we're going.
Nothing that says you don't have to, everything points to the fact that you do have to.
I'm, I'm not the expert, Leah, they are, I'm gonna listen to what they tell us. Town Council.
And they, and, so town council told you, you do not have to hold.
Isn't that what we just heard?
Yeah.
Town council said that we do not have to have one, so that's why we're not having one, so.
And, I mean, from a, like, since the last time, nothing has changed, right? Like, it, it's still the same situation we were in before, we don't have any new hard evidence to prove anything otherwise. I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't know what a hearing will, would accomplish in this particular case, believe me, we, 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 we know where you stand, we, I mean, yeah.
But that's, I mean, I don't see how we're not being transparent, Leah. We're putting stuff on our agenda and saying this is what it is, it's not like we're hiding it and doing something behind the scenes, we're trying to do testing, we're.
Why are we talking, I mean, I just understand why we had the hearings before and now we don't, I mean, there's, there's nothing, there's no.
The only thing I can think of is, I don't know, because it's a renewal of the license and the license did change with the agreement?
It's the same town council.
I'm saying the license.
Right, but last year we didn't actually have, they didn't have a license.
Cause there was cop and litigation, right?
Ended up having a hearing because we were in the same predicament last, last time.
And also there was a, a, you know, the settlement that we came to, I mean, the hearings were also related to that, kind of explaining that to the public, cause, you know, it, it's not.
I brought the same issue up, the same exact issue based on the bylaw, and you said, okay, we'll have a hearing, and you had the hearing and you voted. Now you're not doing it.
Yeah.
So I have to, it's changed, but there's nothing written down anywhere that says that changed.
What town?
Not a renewal, this is a renewal.
Yeah, that was the.
Well, it.
Technically, yeah.
No, it kind, it, it was. They had to submit an application for renewal.
So I guess, next step to move forward, right, and I, I hear you for more communication, so, once we get that, um, you know, results back from, from the testing, that will be communicated, and we'll, we'll, obviously, uh, we could have that on the agenda, agenda in the future.
Have a hearing?
Um, I mean, I, 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 I don't know if there's anything for, for there to be a hearing on specifically. So I'm not sure we'll have a hearing, but we'll definitely have a discussion and, and communicate those results and see where we stand.
And the other part of it is, is that, and not trying to deflect it to anyone else, but does, you know, what do we do versus the Board of Health as far as, because that's their, that's really their role now, right, so pushing it, I don't wanna say like I'm pushing it off the Board of Health, but if that's something that needs to be communicated through Board of Health, I don't wanna step on their toes there, you know, they're gonna be out there trying to do their thing, um, so it might.
And I do wanna make it clear, right, like, when, when we get these results, right, if, if there is contaminants, say, say there are, I mean, it is an industrial park, right? Like, so, so I, I wanna make, like, and it might be easy for us all to say, well, and point the finger at Excel specifically, but, you know, that, that's, like, I wanna make sure I'm not, I'm not specifically saying that, regard, like, when those results come back, like, there might be overall actions that we need to take as a town, right, I'm not saying they're gonna be specifically punitive towards Excel, right, because we don't know exactly the cause of those kind of solutions, right? So, so it's like, you know, I wanna make, make that clear, like, I, I, I understand the, the noise and, and if there's smells coming from the industrial park, I get that, and, and, but. I wanna make that.
But that, the, the environmental consultant, that they, Atlas, said that what they saw in the soil was indicative of what comes out of a metal shredder. In a facility like this, so it really warranted further investigation and testing.
And that's what we're doing now.
But I mean.
Unfortunately, that report never got really finished, I would say, is the way to put it.
Yeah, town, town council did not hold that as anything worth.
There were some issues with it, some serious issues with the report.
I set that over at Brayton Point, too.
So, but, but it wasn't available, we couldn't release it, pretty much, is what, is what it came down to. Um, like, some big issues, so, but now, hopefully, we'll take, we'll have it, yes.
We've heard from the building inspector, I'd like just an update from Board of Health, Dan. And I also want to know what their timeframe is, and I believe the name of the company is Apex, right?
Yeah, correct.
What is their timeframe for this inspection that they're doing on this? What, what would you call it, when calling, evaluation?
So we just, I mean, I don't know if you wanna speak, Kevin, into that, uh.
My understanding is we just signed a contract with them?
Yeah, we're just going into contract with them.
They've been charged, uh, Deb and I spent a rather lengthy conversation with this firm, and very specific relative to what we're looking to get out of them. And I'll say it point blank, uh, we need a testing protocol, I'm sorry, am I, am I not getting picked up?
I hear you loud and clear, Kevin.
All right.
So I apologize, uh, I'll, I'll start out for those that couldn't hear, Deb and I spent a, a, a long time, uh, looking at, at, at a bunch of outfits that do this work, and not a lot of them willing to take it on as it is a, a, uh, it's a, it's a heavy haul, so to speak, right, we're starting from ground zero, but we were very specific with them, and I, and I'm, I was very blunt. If we intend to take any action relative to enforcement for a local bylaw or a state, uh, uh, rule or regulation, there needs to be a testing protocol that will suffer the rigors of a, of a court case, as was alluded to earlier, um, personally, I brought the Apex results in here, and I said the same thing, it's indicative of, of this type of operation, but not enough background information, not enough testing, not enough protocol was there. Uh, so that's what these folks, and, and, and Apex is, is, uh, the owner, the, I, I believe the parent company to, uh, an environmental firm that we have utilized here in town uh, for a very long time, who I have the utmost confidence in, and after speaking with the, the principals over at Apex, I have confidence that they will at least be able to come in, come up with a testing protocol, again, that would be able to, uh, be defended, uh, and do it in a manner that is professional, it's not just sending Kevin out or the, or the building inspector with a, with a sound meter, right? Um, so, I know I'm relatively new to the position, I'm not new to the issue, I think a lot of folks around here understand what my position has been from the beginning. I will tread lightly, uh, in that I have a role and I have a job that's to, to protect everybody's interest and to protect the town's interests, right? So part of doing that is making sure that I'm, I'm good, solid footing, to not put the town in a precarious situation relative to lawsuits or anything along those lines. So, uh, again, uh, the town administrator, Debbie and I, were very, very adamant with these folks that whatever we do, it needs to, and, and, and if we take enforcement action, and they would help us with enforcement too, enforcement actions, wording to certain things and, and the, um, that they would be there to help us defend it, and it would be a defendable position, so, that's the, that's the best update I can give to you.
Well, I appreciate it, it's, it's, it's information that we need to hear, and I, I appreciate the fact that you're doing that.
And I, and I, and, and, yeah.
Apex is under a bigger.
No, Apex is the owner of Environmental Partners Group, so if people don't recognize the Apex name,
Okay.
it is, uh, it is, uh, EPG, Environmental Partners, uh, is part of the Apex family, so to speak. Uh, and we had a level of comfort with EPG, but we wanted to talk to the principals of Apex to make sure that we were all on the same page.
Are you gonna be doing vibrations testing?
I'm not a hundred percent, I'm gonna be honest with you, again, we just signed the contract, so I, I.
Did you ask them about that?
We, we can bring.
One of the guys told me, they, they wouldn't, but they were contracted out for that, and there's no, even though there's no regulation, state regulation on vibrations, and certainly not in town, there's industry standards.
Right, which are not enforceable, right?
Not according to a law that's for.
I'm not gonna get into that conversation, Leah, right, so at the end of the day.
But that is something that Excel cannot control.
I'm sorry?
Vibrations are something Excel cannot control, Marty Paffett told me that to my face.
Okay.
That is worth pursuing.
Okay. We highlighted in our conversations, this is the first time hearing of vibrations being an issue, all right? I'm just telling, this is the first I'm hearing it, so, to be fair, to be fair, this is the first time I'm hearing it, okay? So maybe it has been brought up, I'm not saying it hasn't. Uh, but what was brought up was noise, right, smells, odor, dust, wind-blown debris. So we asked them in our initial conversations, and again, I'm anticipating that this is going to be an, a, a, a long relationship. Should the results of our partnership with them be a positive one? Um, I would like to continue to use the, the monies that we are getting out of the settlement agreement to initiate and maintain compliance by them. So, this is a yearly thing that we're gonna be getting from them, and I anticipate, and I, uh, that we will continue to use that money. This is not a one-time deal, I don't imagine this is gonna be a one-time deal.
No.
Uh, if, if what I took from the initial conversations was that there is going to be a protocol that's gonna be set up relative to how we're gonna test, where we're gonna test, there's gonna have to be a duration of time that they have to test to start establishing baselines and to start establishing critical, uh, issues. Uh, to selectman Matthew's point, um, don't know short of being on their facility, testing every single thing that they do all the time, if we're gonna be able to, uh, you know, guarantee certain things as to say, you know, that piece of dust came from there. But if we are able to show a consistent, while they're in operation, this is what's happening, while they're not in operation, this is what's happening, and that's where we have to go, it's like the sound testing, not to go off on a tangent, but in order for me to do a proper DEP-approved sound test, I have to get them to shut down in the middle of the day during a normal workday. No business is gonna voluntarily shut down during the middle of the day, and I can't order them to do it, right? So part of this is to come up with ways, I, 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 maybe a slightly different testing protocol that they would be able to defend relative to noise and dust and all, you're right, the Apex said it's indicative, right? I came down, I said, look, look what we found, right, you pointed out, look what we found, I sat right over there with town council.
It's happened, it happened in Somerset. It's happened.
Somerset was a little different, Leah, okay, so, but, so let's, let's not keep saying, right?
It's also happened at other facilities around the country.
Sure.
It can happen.
I, I'm not saying it can't.
There is, right, right.
Right, I'm not saying it can't, right?
But let's just hope it doesn't go on for years and years.
No, no, I, I guess I didn't want to, it wasn't said with the hope that we will need Apex forever, that's not what I'm, right? But I have to be mindful, uh, that, and I, I, and you want me to be open and upfront, and you want us to be upfront. This is not something that we're gonna hire them, and next week they go out there, they do a test, and we're shutting down Excel, right? Right, right, okay, so, so I'm, 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 I'm trying to be open, okay, with everybody, there is a protocol. Everything that they do, short of something that may be proprietary to them, which I doubt will be, uh, will be open. Will be open for public consumption and scrutiny, right, what are they gonna do, how are they gonna do it? Now, there may be testing times that may not be, because we don't necessarily want that to, but I would imagine most of it, how we're gonna do it, what's the intent, why we're gonna do it, I would imagine that the Board of Health, uh, once we get our feet on, and, and, once they get their feet under them, uh, under themselves, will probably bring this company in to give them a bit of a presentation on what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. Uh, so, I, I will be, uh, available and open and upfront with everybody, as has it been for my twenty-one years here in town, right? Uh, but I'm also gonna be open and upfront about what your expectations should be too, right? So, so, I think you, again, all understand, I think everyone in this room wants a cleaner, healthier Freetown. I think folks on that side of the table have, have gone through court cases and frustration and settlements, much like people who have sat in the seat, my job. We're on number five or six now, and it's in no small part because of Excel. And then, that, that is not to speak of the people themselves, but just the, the issue itself. And it, and it, and, and I'll just, I'll end it on this, it's just, this is why it's so important oftentimes when people like myself and Carl and the select board are making decisions, that they do it with the most amount of information, they, and, and, and they do it with the best interests of the folks in Freetown.
Right, this is why we're here.
Yeah.
Um.
So thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is this meeting being recorded?
Yes.
If it's, if, okay.
It'll be on the YouTube page.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, so get to hear my voice again.
Okay. Gonna move on here?
Well, we didn't answer their transparency, so in short, well, once we know what they're gonna be doing, if needed, and when needed, we will notify the residents of the neighboring property, so, keep that in mind. Like Kevin just said, like Debbie just said, it was literally just signed within days ago, okay? So we're, we're looking forward to seeing what the next steps are as much as you are, so we also want some answers as well, right? Whether they're what we are expecting or not, that's to be determined, and we'll, we'll make sure that you're informed as needed, when needed, so that in the event someone's walking around your neighborhood, maybe knocking on your door, we wanna make sure that you're aware of that, all right? That will happen, well, through Board Health.
And we did have that issue, I guess, last testing time, apparently there's folks who didn't let, people take, try and take samples onto the property. So that, you know, and I can see if someone just randomly shoved my property with no, you know, wouldn't know, so we definitely wanna communicate and make sure everyone understands what's going on there.
Right, so, and, and, once again, not trying to deflect, but I'm assuming a lot of that's gonna come through the Board of Health, right? So the, the testing is gonna be passed on to them, they're the authority figure in that stuff, so, um, I would think that the Board of Health will then receive it, digest it, and pass along as such, it's gonna be, you know, it's public document as far as I'm concerned, right, so, um.
Understanding Excel's not operating under a health permit, right?
Yeah.
So at this point in time, we would have our regulations, and we have a local regulation, uh, and I know I'm talking, I don't have.
Run, Kevin, run.
Getting your steps in today.
Um, we, we have a very general regulation, again, that the one that I was, I was, I was staking my claim on, that basically says if the Board of Health determines that something may in fact be a public nuisance or a, a risk to public health, we can determine that it's a noisome trade, we can, uh, require it to have site assignments, excuse me, and, and, and other things, uh, which is why we need the testing, so, again, Board of Health can only do so much relative to the obvious, right? If something is wrong, I just left the meeting, got a smell complaint, I heard some smells, I will go down, uh, I'm on a limited schedule this week due to training, but I will go down tomorrow before I leave for training, uh, and, and speak with them and see if there's something that we can't do to mitigate that. But short of trying to find them and state that they are out of compliance with a local regulation, and as soon as I do that, they're going to say, okay, tell me what level of smell I need to be at. And I'm gonna, you know, and that's, and that is our issue, and to, and to some of these folks' point, yeah, some of our regulations are from the seventies, they need to be updated, right? I spent the first several months trying to go through that and update things, and we've done little by little, but I'm not an expert on that, I can update rules and regs relative to food and septic, housing camps, I can do all, but as far as this, which is why we had to go to that level of environmental testing. So, again, um, we will be looking at these things, looking to utilize every bylaw and regulation that we have to help protect the citizens here in Freetown, everyone that is available to us, but we want to do it, make sure that we'll be successful when we do it.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Kevin.
A couple, couple, back in.
I, I, I just have one quick observation, so Siri and I walk every single day, two miles a day. Sometimes we are up on Payne Road in the forest, almost to the intersection there, and you can hear, smell, you know, it's, I mean, things are not stopped by that road of whatever that is, and here we are over a mile away, and you can still, you know, it's, nothing stops it. And at our homes, maybe because we are up higher, we do get a lot of problems there on High Street. And I really feel like you can test right here at that site.
See, and I, and not to cut you off, but there's a perfect example of where common sense is, is, is overwhelmed by the, 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 the testing requirements. The DEP's testing requirements, they have to test at the property line. It's ten decibels over ambient noise at the property line, well, if you stand on the backside of a sound abatement wall anywhere, I don't care, yes, the sound is gonna be down.
Yeah.
But hopefully, this firm will then take into account, and this is what we talked about too with them, take into account the, uh, the geographical differences in, in, in height, in elevations, in location, prevailing winds, and things like that, so that. prevailing winds, and things like that, so that in the future, we would have a way to maybe mitigate some of that. So so yes, I think a big part of it, because I've gone out there on noise complaints, smell complaints and all, right? And I will readily admit, in spite of the size of my nose, I don't have a very good sniffer. So when people say, do you smell that, it stinks, I don't. So, that's hard for me to enforce something that way, why you can't. But noise, you know, I will go out and I'll try to find, I mean, somebody called Jed, called me the other day, he said there was a night for the life of, you know, up there, I'm walking around the woods, we we figured it out, it was a lot, but so we will do it as much as we can, but you're right, I've noticed, you go up High Street, get up by Charlie's house, your house, keep going up there, all of a sudden, it's it's loud, and I would say, in my heart of hearts, that I believe it may not meet the 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 ten decibels over. But again, when brought up with D E P uh for testing, we test at the property line. So, that's why I say it's vital, if we're gonna be doing this as a town, right, understanding where we are at, what we've spent already on 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 this. That if we're gonna do it, we wanna do it right. We don't wanna do it and cost the money and then have a bunch of disappointed residents coming back a year later saying, well, it's strike two now, folks. So, I would say this, give us an opportunity, give the new Board of Health an opportunity, and again, there is no active permit under health, we're gonna be looking to create protocols by which we can enforce our existing rules and the state's protocol, because local boards of health have the authority under Mass General law to uh effectively enforce state compliance too. So, having these folks on board is gonna be an asset.
What about the debris out back where Jed was, I think he showed you along the tracks, all that shredder debris that was out there?
So I don't know if it was Jed that showed.
No, Bill.
Bill. So again, when.
That's illegal disposal of hazardous waste, that's what that is.
That is papers flying through the air, okay? You and I will choose our words very differently, I understand you're on that side of the table, so you can make statements like that. I cannot stand here and or sit here and make a statement as a town official that is an illegal dumping of something or other, right? It wasn't done on purpose, right? And so we go over there, okay, I ask them about it, we see, they try to mitigate it. I'm not saying this, I'm not here as a spokesperson for Excel, okay? But you asked what I did, I went over there, I documented, took pictures, wrote a narrative when I got back.
We get it tested?
Tested for, no, 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 to answer your question, no, I don't tell, if something flies through the air and I get a complaint that something flew through the air on somebody's property, I don't immediately test it. I know what it is, it's plastic paper that's coming from their facility, I've got it on video, I can see something coming up, right? But if, but at the end of the day, understand that if you drive by any number of places, you will see that kind of material happen, you know, flying around and all. So we try to mitigate it as best we can, right?
Right.
And 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 let's face it.
This is where the frustration is, Kevin, and with all due respect, because I I know where you stand on this. We've had this stuff, it absorbs into paper towels, it's disgusting, it smells, it's greasy, it's oily.
No, no one's arguing that, right? So I test a piece of paper, I test a piece of paper.
It's not just one piece, it's bags of it.
I have it on video, there was not bags of it out there.
We have brought bags of it.
No, 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 hold on, hold on, when I went out there, you're asking me about specifically the day I went out there. I went out there, I documented it, I did not disagree with the gentleman, that this is where it's, I've got it, it's a very bad video because of, again, wherever it is, and I'm with the cell camera, okay? Other, you know, um but it is what it is. But I go over there, and I mention it to them, I see that they try to do so, okay, we'll wet it down a little bit more, we'll try to mitigate some some of that flying around. But the entire drive there, there's stuff flying around everywhere, not necessarily for them. When you're on doing enforcement, you have to prove unequivocally without a doubt, okay, so so let us do, let us do our job.
I just wanna make sure that it is tested.
If the engineers that we have hired think it is worth our time, energy and money to test that material, that we can then enforce something, then we will absolutely do it, but we're gonna be relying on them. These are people that have been in court before that do this, this is how you.
I'm not pulling this out of thin air, I'm based, I'm going on Attorney General reports on other facilities.
I don't disagree with anything you're saying. You but you have, you certain, but when you're on that side of the table, you have the right and the ability to say certain things and make certain statements, I cannot.
Oh, I understand, but I just wanna make sure that you're hearing us.
Heads up, everybody, no, we have a public hearing in two minutes, so um I'm just gonna wrap it up, I know.
My one-year experience at Somerset was great in point, came out of the factory, good, hard information. A lot of times with the court, with bad information, they threw it out, things like, what was the, was it overcast the day you took those? Does it make a difference for noise and dust, was it overcast, was it sunny? So you gotta be real specific, you have good, hard information, and yeah, that's what brought them down. I think the positive's out, we have a committed board, we're finally doing some good testing, and and so we have a a town council who's experienced in doing this, so we have a lot of good things going on here. Let's keep this going forward, start it today, and hopefully till the end, we will get our answers, and if we have to act on it, I think the Board has said they will act on it, so. We're not gonna turn that alone, we need good, hard information, and we'll hope we get that.
And unfortunately, I I'll say this, I think that the the previously, we went, we went about this the the wrong way. I think that uh that there was, there's room for improvement on the way it was approached, and I think a lot of time and energy was wasted last time around, so trying to do this by the book in the right way, and hopefully, you know, we'll get, we'll get a truthful outcome, that's all I'm looking for, right?
I have a question, uh sorry, Kevin, uh is it some point in time, we can see what the Apex Company's gonna be testing and how they're gonna test the uh?
Yeah.
It should be all available through public records or files with the.
I'll I'll answer it for you. I anticipate, like I I mentioned earlier, that this will be brought up for the Board of Health, uh which we newly elected, right, so they have, they're they're gonna have their first meeting, I'm assuming in the next coming weeks, right? They'll organize the board, they'll get their feet under them, and then we'll probably end up bringing Apex in uh to tell us a little about how and what they're gonna do.
Okay.
Without tipping our hat too much.
Right.
Right? Uh and all that is public information, everything that's gonna happen at meetings, there's nothing that's gonna be clandestine. If in fact, we want to go out and test on people's property, we will absolutely ask you, notify you, we will probably end up getting some sort of if if need be, easement documentation, if it's gonna be something that's gonna be consistent. So, uh the good news is, Kyle had had said it, I didn't wanna bring it up earlier, put him on the spot, but he was over in Somerset during this, right? And 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 so he understands, right? I think that's a big part of uh of of why he's here to a certain degree. Uh I'm gonna be relying on him uh an awful lot, um but I think we're we're in lockstep to this. So yes, everything's gonna be upfront, out there, uh short of giving up some sort of strategy.
Right.
Alright, thanks everybody, yeah, uh it's seven o'clock, public hearing, so gotta cut you everybody off, but thank you very much.
Thank you guys, appreciate it. Appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you, Carl, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, everybody.
Wanna go into that and then come back to person out?
Yeah, and 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 I saw agenda item five, we have to go back to that. Um so, public hearing?
Yes.
Town of Freetown Public Notice, notice hereby given that the applicant has filed for a change of manager to Hillary McGrath for an existing alcohol beverage retail license, Wine and Malt Beverages for Neon Beverages LLC, thirty-three thirty-six, Innovative Way, Freetown, Massachusetts, oh-two-seven-oh-two, a public hearing. To consider the above matter will be held on Monday, April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, at seven P M at the Police Station Community Room, fifteen Monroe Drive, East Freetown, Mass, oh-two-seven-one-seven, uh with that, the public hearing is now open? I don't think I wrote on that right, I always forget this one. Alright.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Attorney Thomas Klon, representing the applicant, with me tonight is Hillary McGrath, and she is the proposed uh new manager on the liquor license for the Neon Marketplace store that was opened, I believe, in about October of twenty-twenty-two. I'm happy to report that things have been very, going very well at the new store. Um I think we had an original application with a manager name, and we had a new manager change in I think the fall of twenty-twenty-two, or early fall, maybe late summer, and uh now they hope to have found their final manager in the period of time, and Ms. McGrath. Um she's been with this particular store since it opened in October of twenty-twenty-two, she's been with the company uh for approximately two years, she is TIPS certified, that certification was part of the application process that we submitted. Uh she's on premises, um she told me at least fifty, but usually sixty hours per week. Most communities like the year, forty hours per week, so she's she's there um quite a bit. Um and and uh certainly anticipates being there at least forty hours per week, I think she hopes someday to not be working sixty hours per week. Uh but um unless the board has any specific questions, again, we think this is a fairly straightforward request to change the name of the manager again to somebody who's been on site since the store was opened and been with the company for two years.
No questions from me?
The only question I have is, more curiosity, did anything else, how are the Tesla chargers, uh uh people actually using them? Okay, uh business has been going well and everything else, that's it's good to hear, good, I'm glad. Um high-speed pumps you have there for diesel trucks, they're, I'm sure they're being used quite often with like, with the Amazon and Stop and Shop and everything else, good, so everything's going perfect, wood fire grill's still working good, keep those pieces coming out, I appreciate it. Good.
You ready, good?
Yeah, no, I think straightforward, just no.
Yeah.
Alright, anyone? Yeah, anyone else have questions or concerns on this?
Just uh as the health agent, I've got interactions with Mrs. McGrath, uh Mrs. McGrath, she, I don't know, uh and nothing but professional.
Good.
Responsible quality on site.
Awesome, great to hear.
Thank you.
Alright, so with that, so um I'm gonna close the public hearing, then we'll vote on it? So without, I'm in motion to close the public hearing?
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, alright, so um I'll, agenda item fourteen, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for change of manager to Hillary McGrath for Neon Beverages LLC.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep, Victoria, so we're gonna jump back to agenda item five and have an update from the Planning Land Use Admin.
We got our newest planning board member there at home.
You ever got a microphone in front of you?
Get you on this side of the table.
That's right.
Well, that's awful fancy up there, what's that?
Well, we've upgraded from our yellow piece of paper to the screen telling us what to do.
Away here.
Well, it's a good thing I do what I do.
It used to be me, Trevor, and then I felt like there was an awkward one in the middle of the screen, I have to move to this hall.
Have a good night, folks.
Good night, Kevin, thank you.
That's right, I'll share mine so you can have.
Probably because of the Android.
Yep, doing something.
There it is.
Well done.
Alright, okay, thanks for having me, I'm Victoria Dantoni, I'm the Planning and Land Use Administrator. Um so I'm here to give um you all an update on the ongoing projects we have with the planning board. So we have a lot going on, most of them are grant projects that um we've been working on. Um so I'm just gonna go through the list, and you can uh feel free to jump in if you have any questions at any point. So last time, um I was in front of the board, I was giving you an update on the Complete Streets grant funding program. Um and I discussed uh the Tier Two prioritization plan, so that was the list of projects that uh was submitted to Mass DOT. So when I was here, I had just submitted it, so it has since uh then been approved by Mass DOT. So that gives us the option to apply for, it's called Tier Three uh co- funding, to actually construct the project. Um so you can, they have two grant funding rounds, May first and October first, so myself and Deb had a meeting with environmental partners um who was our consultant for Tier Two uh for the project, to see which project would be best, and we let them know of all the other stuff we have going on in town. Um so what came up was the Four Corners intersection, so we recently had a technical memo done by Starped uh that uh they did traffic counts, and it was really to try and see what the best option for that intersection is. Um I think anyone who drives through it knows that some improvements could be made to to make it safer. So, as a result of that technical memo, um uh roundabout was suggested, but more um engineering would need to be done that is beyond Starped's capability. Um so I did uh submit an article for the June Annual Town Meeting uh for funding to do an engineering study on this. Um so, as a result of the conversation uh we had with E P, we thought it would be best to sort of wait to apply, instead of um doing a smaller project, we'd only have the remainder of the five hundred thousand to use for this project, um for the Four Corners. So we wanted to preserve um the full grant award amount, because you're only allowed five hundred thousand every four fiscal years. Um we want to preserve that, and also, we'd be a first-time Tier Three applicant, so we'd be more likely to get funded that way. So we figured it would be the best use to try and wait and see if we get the engineering study funded, and if so, uh and it's completed, we could apply for the October first grant round.
Do we have any idea what, sorry to cut you off, Victoria, do we have any idea what a roundabout would cost there? Deb, we heard anything on that?
What was it, seven?
Yeah.
So so we would, we would absorb the five hundred thousand, but it's, isn't it match? Is it match?
Seven hundred thousand, they give you fi- they will give you the full five hundred thousand, and we'd have to pay the other two, so we have to pay.
I couldn't remember if it was match for some reason.
No, we either have to pay chapter ninety money or sta- stabilization funding, uh but we, yeah.
Two hundred sounds a lot better than seven hundred, absolutely.
Right, you know.
Great.
Thank you, sorry to cut you off, Victoria.
No worries, no, I was done with this one, so if anyone does have any questions?
No, that's awesome, great, okay.
Thank you, um so the next uh project is the Municipal Americans with Disabilities Act, it's a improvement grant program. So this program offers planning and project grants, so I receive, we received uh thirty-five thousand dollars to create a self-evaluation and transition plan, so this was a requirement as of, I believe it was like nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one, that uh all communities were supposed to do. Um so we we haven't done done that yet, so through this grant program, this is gonna be our first one. So what this is, is um we had uh surveyors come and evaluate um all of our town buildings and recreational areas that are open to the public, to evaluate them for ADA compliance. Um so they were looking at things like the door widths, counter heights, things like that. Um so, we're at the step where they already did all the surveys, and so they're now starting to compile draft reports for each building, um and recreational areas. So this is anticipated to be completed by June thirtieth, that's also when the contract ends. Um so our our next step after we have this um submitted uh to um the Office of Disability, would be to, we could apply for what's called a project grant, so that is to implement some of the uh recommended changes to help bring us into the compliance. So they don't have a minimum amount, but they do have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar maximum amount um to apply.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For all this is very expensive.
So I guess, will they prioritize it for us, right? So if we say we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and a million dollars worth of stuff, are they gonna prioritize it, no?
It'll be um a dis- probably a discussion from the planning board and maybe the selectmen uh to decide what what they pri- what you prioritize as a town for the.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know if, if sometimes if you have a third party, you know, kinda looking at it and saying things and saying, this is kinda what makes the most sense to go after.
But it's, it's also two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so it's not something that, it's one and done. We we can continue to apply for the projects as long as we complete the 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 projects that we apply for, once we complete the next round, we can apply again, so it could be, uh we, I mean, we're, we are well aware that this uh transition plan's probably gonna tell us that we're deficient in a lot of areas. So I think, um like I said, Victoria, with the planning boards, help will probably prioritize wh- where the needs are and 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 start working down the list.
I do, I do wanna note that, I know it does sound really expensive, but from the couple of draft reports I received, some of the uh comments are actually as simple as uh, you know, someone from from maintenance or something like that, going to just uh fix something, like for example, like, if uh it requires more than five pounds to push open a door, it needs to be adjusted. So that's an easy, an easy fix relatively, right? So there's some things that are minor like that, but there are some larger things, as we know, like the town hall has stairs and there's no wave, you know what I mean? So there.
I've noticed.
It ranges, yeah, so just wanted to note that.
In handsome, we did that too, we did like, you know, check and do some of the things, the height, the site, the height signs, site, the heights can be changed, they, you know what I mean?
Yeah, some of those kinda easy, cheaper things that probably do make a big impact on, you know.
Grab bars.
Not taking care of them, if you're not, you know, doing it right.
Right, so we can do, like, to Victoria's point, yeah, we can do some stuff internally.
Excellent, keep going, Victoria, keep going.
Thank you, okay, so next we have the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, so we received thirty thousand uh dollars from Mima to uh to create a plan. to, to create a plan, so this does require a twenty-five percent match. So we are providing seventy-five hundred dollars, that's in staff time, that we're providing that. So a hazard mitigation plan will, it's a demonstration of the community's commitment to reduce risks from natural hazards and serves as a strategic guide for decision-makers as they prioritize and commit resources to mitigating hazards. So for example, we know flooding is an issue here, that's something that will be looked at in the plan and worked through. So this one we are just beginning, we just can, chose a consultant, Horsley Witten Group. So we're finalizing the paperwork with that. The anticipated completion date is well ahead of the contract end date, so we do have some wiggle room if MEMA or FEMA have any comments and we need to revise the plan. So this will entail creating a hazard mitigation committee, so it'd be mainly like department heads that would come together to sort of discuss this with our consultant and work through to create the plan.
Excellent.
So we have Safe Roots School Infrastructure Grant Funding Program, so I applied for this back in the fall. So we did receive the grant, we are working towards the next steps with this. So Safe Roots of School works with communities to increase active transportation among schools. So the project I applied for, which was also in the Complete Streets prioritization plan, was to create a shared use path along Memorial Drive. So I did apply for an eight-foot wide path, but Mass DOT and Safe Roots like to see the ten-foot wide, so they did change that. So they went back and forth a little bit with cost estimates, I applied for seven hundred and fifty thousand, that was the estimate that was provided in the, through Complete Streets, so they're estimating it's gonna cost about six hundred thousand dollars. So which is good, so we'll be able to be covered with that. So we are in the first year, we just did the ten percent design concept plan, which I'll show on the next slide. So this is a multi-year process to completion, it's gonna take five years. So the next steps for this, after we just did the ten percent design, I have to go back into the application portal and add this information in there. And in concert with Mass DOT District Five, which is our, covers our district. Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I do, just for, I know recently, there was, related to this, right, there was this, wasn't the crosswalk like torn up?
Be my question as well, did it start already? Did it start already?
That was the highway department, they were actually straight, straight in and out, and they're getting ready to do the crosswalk.
Gotcha.
Part of the groundwork that they need to do, because they, you know, after we get this grant and it's ten-foot wide, the crosswalk now needs to be ten-foot wide to match this, so we're, we're working together to try to get that piece of it done. Because that's a different grant, that's a shared streets.
So.
Go ahead, no, my only question is, is you're saying that needs to be ten feet wide, and then right now there's that fence, fencing all along, so they're gonna this is a school, I mean, I'm assuming the school wouldn't give us a hard time, right, because that's gonna push back against the, the kids.
That was a discussion, so that may need, that, I don't, wait, isn't the fence along?
It's Bullock and Memorial, the corner of Memorial.
Yeah, so it may, it may need to be pushed back, that was something that was brought up.
I guess regardless, I mean, I have a hard time believing that they're really gonna go against us, but I think it would be a good conversation before everyone with the school department, before someone goes over there and takes the fence and pushes it back.
Yeah.
Because I don't think that, it might be, but it, it might not, it's not that far off the road.
Yeah, so, so just so you're aware, this was a joint application process, so Chuck, yeah, so Chuck and the principal, principal ward were both on the application and review, they're in, yeah.
Not trying to cut you off, not trying to be rude by saying that, but thank you.
And I did notify the school committee that we did get this grant and that Victoria would be making them a presentation when we got through budgets.
Congrats.
Yes.
Because she loves doing this so much.
It looks great.
To keep the school committee in the loop, right?
Yeah, yeah, I know, that's why.
So she, she would do that one, went more further into this.
Yes, they did give, the school committee did give a letter of support for the grant application, so it would be good to sort of update them.
Do we have an anticipated start time for the crosswalk? Yeah, beginning of construction?
Uh, for construction twen- twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
And it should be.
For the crosswalk, because we're two different things. Um, I just got that engineered, sorry, because we're handling two different pieces of this. I got that engineered from GPI and now they need to adjust it to make the ten-foot wide, and then we should be probably starting that fairly soon, we've gotta order the equipment, we have to do it by the end of the year per our grant contract.
That's what I figured, it's probably June thirty or something.
It's gonna get done, so.
Awesome, this is great.
Okay, so next we have the master plan, so we're just starting this. So for those who don't know, a master plan is a document and policy guide designed to help communities create a vision of what they wanna look like in the future, so it really helps staff and, you know, residents to see what the goals are for the town, you know, what we wanna see. So we received a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars total to create a master plan, and this will be the town's first one, just so everyone's aware. So we received seventy-five thousand from DHCD and sixty thousand dollars from Serp Ed. So we have chosen Serp Ed as our consultant, they are a regional planning agency, and they do help with a lot of projects in town such as, they helped with the open space plan, they did the technical memo for the Four Corners. And they're generally just a good resource to have, to have there when you have questions. So our anticipated completion date is the end of twenty twenty-four, so this is a long process, we might need to extend the grant through DHCD, just because of, you know, how intensive a process it is. So I am prepared to, to have that extended if needed. So our next steps, we're just beginning the process, we're gonna be holding our first master plan committee tomorrow. And then Serp Ed will also be giving a presentation to our department heads at the next department head meeting. And they will also be presented to the planning board as soon as well, to sort of just kick things off, let everyone know what's going on and what the process will be like. And to get input as well.
I do like the logo better.
Yeah, I like the logo.
Yeah, this, yeah, Serp, Serp Ed did this logo, we went through a few, a few different drafts, and I feel like this one definitely gives it a more homey feel. Yeah. I like that the bandstand is in there, it's nice. Yeah, so next we have the Open Space and Recreation Plan, so, which I know you guys are aware that, you know, the Open Space Recreation Advisor Committee and Serp Ed have, have been working on this, it has been submitted to the state, we are waiting to hear back. So I came on very end, the very end of the process, and they already had majority of the work done. So it's pending approval right now, typically they will return, return the document with comments and we'll, we'll address those, but once we have what's called conditional approval, we can apply for several other grants for our recreational areas, so that's really gonna be, be great. So our next steps would be to address comments once we receive them, and decide on a project with the appropriate land use boards to apply for.
Excellent.
Okay, so Mass DOT Speed Feedback Signs, so we were awarded two speed feedback signs, so what these are is they monitor speed, and they also like collect the, collect the data, and it has a flashing light as well, flashing beacon. So we were awarded two signs to put on Bullock Road, so Mass DOT will deliver the signs to be installed by the municipality. Chuck is aware, Highway is aware, and on board, they will be installing. Data from the signs need to be sent to Mass DOT periodically until twenty twenty-six. So the police department typically handles the data for the speed signs, so they are aware and they will be submitting data. So the agreement has been sent back to Mass DOT, I'm waiting for the, for them to sign it off. These will probably be delivered sometime in the summer and hopefully installed before the end of the summer. So Highway does have to complete in a training installation, you know, so they install it properly to the correct height, all that. One thing I did wanna know to the board is that I could not find if we have established a school zone for over here. You know, I tried, Luanne helped try and look, Town Clerk's Office as well.
You know, you would think you were slattering one before you built the school there.
Yeah, so as a condition of getting these signs, we do need to establish a school zone, so I just wanted to make you, you guys aware.
We're waiting also for the Town Clerk's Office to pull some old records so that I can deep dive.
Yeah.
Boxes.
Yeah.
Does it change?
I feel like on Bullock Road, it's gotta be.
Yeah, does it change like the speed limit that's currently enforced there by doing that, and then if it does, then is there a process for doing that? I guess.
I don't think it would change the speed limit, I would assume that's been set by the road commissioners, which is.
I would think so, but you just.
At some point.
When you tell me that.
Carlton may know when and if that's been done, but I, I wonder if the school would have the school, did you reach out to Principal Ward?
Yeah, I, yeah, we didn't hear anything, yeah, no one could really, we reached out to Carlton as well, no one really had a definite answer, so I figured rather be safe than sorry.
That's interesting, that school's been there for.
Yeah.
Almost paid off.
Nineteen fifty.
Really?
Yeah.
It'd also been one of those things that just.
Yeah.
Overlooked, sucked through the cracks.
Right.
Right, yeah. This school's been there since nineteen fifty.
Longer than I expected.
The update made, the update was made in ninety-nine, two thousand?
It was upgraded in two thousand, I'm honored, thank you.
So last we have, and we take communities, so I, we submitted an action plan in January that detailed how the board was going to create a new district, so that included, you know, public comment, things like that. So I did wanna point out that the data the state provided was incorrect, so as you can see, the tiny red dot with that half-mile blue circle around it, the other one, with the half-mile circle.
Right in the middle of the.
Exactly, yeah, that is what the state provided, so the train station is actually like a mile further down at the big red dot that I put on there. Yeah, it's at one fifty-three South Main Street, so the state gave us this data point, and that's how they determined all the calculations, what percent our district had to be within the half-mile, the amount of developable acres we, they said we had. So I did reach out to the, to the state, and they did confirm that there are inaccuracies, and I've been waiting to hear back, they said they would reach out when they had a more substantial update, so that was about a month ago. So the board did decide to hold off on working on this new district because we didn't want to go through all of this work and then need to change it. So, but we are still staying up to date with other communities, for example, Middleborough has an approved forty R district through DHCD. So they're already covered, they're in compliance. So the board's gonna start looking into forty R at our next meeting, we're sort of gonna go over Middleborough's approved district, as well as Lakeville has a forty R district that they have submitted to DHCD for approval. I don't believe they've heard back yet and whether or not it was approved, but that's something the board will be looking into, with a forty R, it's a smart growth zoning district. The town can get incentive funds from creating the district, and then also when units are built for each unit, we can also receive funds. So this would help offset the cost, if we have to create a multifamily housing district anyways, it would help offset, you know, the increased number of emergency services we'll need to provide, and also, you know, students adding to the school system and, and things like that, just overall increased services. So we're definitely gonna be looking into that, see if that's a good option. So right now, we still have the same deadline of twenty twenty-four, I don't think the state is going to extend that for us.
So what's the deadline for, to actually create the district?
Correct, yep, and submit it for approval to DHCD, so with twenty twenty-four, it might seem like a long time, but you, this has to get approved at town meetings, so if
Thank you.
it gets shot down, we have to try again and.
And then, yeah, this is, this is gonna be a big important thing, right, for the town, because, so if we so say the town doesn't approve this kind of high density, which is totally changing our bylaws, like totally, then we, we won't get any kind of, they can withhold any kind of funding for us, right?
Right.
Well, we don't receive any now.
That's the stick.
We don't receive any funding now.
Yes, we are rece-
I'm saying all funded.
All, all the grant funding, so almost every project she's talked about has come from via a grant.
Right.
And you know all the grants that I have under my purview, those, those, they would like the sewer line is a Mass Works grant, that's a state-funded grant, the planning for the planning, that's a state-funded grant. They would say, okay, no more grants for you.
So they would pull funding that's not related to any of this across the entire town?
Yes.
So that, so if the residents say no to housing, because it is a concern for schools, you say it will increase schools in peace and fire, of course, traffic and all that, you know. That, that is, wow, that is, that is horrible.
Are they gonna bring them up on charges, right, if they didn't?
Yeah, the new attorney general did release a letter that said they will sue towns that do not comply, they said this is not a suggestion, this is a. Yeah.
So.
Heard about this on the radio the other day.
Yeah.
Waste of taxpayer dollars, but what's the numbers we have right now, where, are we still at seven hundred and fifty?
Yeah, as of right now, I, I don't believe that number will change because we have the train station, so even though the calculations are incorrect and the state is going to provide us new data, they're not going to decrease the amount of units we need, so that.
That makes sense, and, and so the other, other part, just to clarify, because I've, I've been very kinda interested in this. So say this is where the dot should be, right?
Yep.
Around there, there's almost like no housing currently, or not even really spaced where we could have.
Ex- exactly, exactly.
So, so would, do they make the area larger in that case, so that, or do, is it, do they move where it is?
Water, sea forest, that stuff.
Stop and shop.
Yeah, right, businesses that are right there, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what they would call like excluded land, so basically, almost everything in the, I think it's a darker pink, is excluded land, so that, that that's part of their calculation of saying how many developable acres we have, so basically, no, they would, they would not make the half-mile radius bigger, but they would say, they would reduce the amount of the district that we need to include in that half-mile radius, so we could include it in another area of town.
Okay, so that, so okay, so, so we could get to the same place with having enough kind of square footage of, of whatever, high-density development area, like a zone, but it doesn't necessarily need to be there, it could be up somewhere else.
Correct.
So we could have part of it here and then say part of it on Chase Road out here, is what you're saying theoretically? I'm just saying Chase Road, because don't anyone shoot me because it's literally where we are, so that's why I'm throwing up Chase Road.
I see them coming now, Jerry.
You know, so that, that, yes, that's fine.
So right, so right now, with the calculations they gave with the transit station being in the incorrect location, we need, we would need forty percent of the district to be within the half-mile, so I think that's gonna be dramatically reduced with the new calculations because there's almost nowhere.
Yeah, there's no land back there.
One, like developable lot, like, you know, that one lot that's across the street, I can't think of anything else.
You, you can zone for parcels that are already developed.
So yeah, so.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be undeveloped parts.
So like, if you have a house on South Main Street over there, you could sub, you could knock it down and subdivide and build something, big apartments.
So this one talks a lot about forty R, I also heard forty B, forty XYZ, there's so many different forties out there, what's the distinctions between those?
So forty R is a smart group zoning, so it's allows for a high, high-density zoning, but forty B is affordable housing.
Okay.
They're actually very similar, they're, they're just really similar in that, but forty R is the one that will allow, will give, give compensation to the town, but they're both, they're both fairly similar. A forty B is a contractor can come in, it doesn't need to be in a forty R district, and they can throw away all your zoning and do whatever they'd like. Forty R, there will be some guidelines in place that gives it the high density, and it's sort of like zoning, but in a zoning overlay district, so, but they're very, very similar. I know that I used to get the complaint that having a forty R is gonna attract these affordable housing projects, but it doesn't, because you can do a forty B almost anywhere, anywhere in town, you don't have to be within a zone, and that's what people don't understand, you can do a forty B out on Chase Road if you wanted to. The forty R just makes it more streamlined and puts some guidelines in place.
Yeah, I guess that was gonna be my next question, if I was a developer, why would I go with a forty R versus a forty B then, if you're saying that a forty B is easier to do? Is it?
I don't think they're easier, I think they're very similar.
Oh, okay.
Actually, I think a forty R might be easier because the forty B, the first step in a forty B is you have to go to the state for approval, and I, I don't believe you have to do the same thing with a forty R.
Just because if we're gonna do this, and then we find out that someone's gonna come in and put a forty B in the zone, and it doesn't help us, then you know what, what would be the purpose, so it's, it's encouraging, you'd rather hear that if they're gonna do it, that it would be a forty R to at least help us meet the guidelines.
Well, this forty R business, well, like you said, it's going, it's going out to a town vote, right? So the residents of this free town must vote to approve a new district, right, so for those listening at home and those in the audience, that's what is our next step for this. Now, let's say, you know, we're here for the will of the voter, so if they vote yes, what's the next step? They, they propose what they're building, they, do they, do we know what they're building ahead of time, or it's just like, hey, surprise, a hundred units?
Just creating a new district, so that, so that a developer, correct me if I'm wrong. Like a developer could come in and say, alright, like, if you think about one, some of those houses on Main Street, you, you need a certain amount of square footage, frontage. Those rules go out the window, and you can have six, seven units on a lot.
Per acre, right?
Height goes away, right, there's a lot of different.
All the zoning goes away unless you put them in the forty R, but the forty R has to be. All this one goes away unless you put some in the forty R, but the forty R has to be approved by.
The state.
State first and then town meeting, or do you know, cause it's very, it's actually very long process.
It is, yeah, I was looking into the application, it's like thirty pages, it's very long.
It's a very long process.
Yeah, I'm not sure which, we have to go to the state first before we spend the, I think it goes to the state first, that way they make sure it's.
Yeah.
It's a real forty R and it's meets all the requirements before it gets brought before town meeting, but this is.
Makes sense.
Yeah, this is definitely gonna be a process, even applying for the funds, um you know, it's a separate application, it's definitely.
It's a long process, you can't just do it quickly.
This was a little saying, but it's just, you know, I think that where this ends up can, you know, we talked about smart growth for the town. We really can't control this growth based on what's come, with the train coming. Um so it's just, you know, because, so yeah, they'll give us money towards. Schools and other things, right, but it's the roadways and what infrastructure can handle it and. What might make the least amount of impact to the residents that don't want, you know, uh. Three hundred tenant house next door to them, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I think that's something that, but the good news is, is it has to be voted on by the townspeople, not just. Three of us sitting up here saying, okay, this is what we feel, the planning board, whoever else, right?
Right.
It will be a long process for the planning board, I mean, they will have to spend a lot of meetings, discuss where it should go, what the requirements are. I started the process in Hanson, in fact, I have all templates for you.
To play, Victoria, just play devil's advocate, so I asked the question if uh they have voted yes, let's say the town comes out and votes no. Right, what's the next step then?
You get sued.
Ri- well, the AG Campbell did say that she would, with her memo, recent memo. That there are four towns right now, I believe, four towns or cities out of a hundred plus. That have refused to comply with the final stages of developing on the forty R. So that said, I'm sure we're keeping an eye on Middleborough, which is our closest neighbor that said no, but let's say our town says no, what's our next step? So for those listening, what, what would be the next step for their awareness?
I mean, that sounds, I would also have to discuss that with the planning board, but what, I think the next logical step would be either to revise the district to make it. Uh you know, more in line with what the residents want and then trying to.
Do it again.
Yeah, that's what I would say, um but you know, I do have to, would have to consult with my board on that, um. But it is, you know, a big deal that, you know, the attorney, the new Attorney General has come out and said they will sue towns. And also, all the funding that we received, they could just pull it in the middle of the, in the middle of the grant, so like. You know, we have a lot of great projects going on, we, our small town cannot afford to fund all these projects without the grants, so. It's kind of, you know what I mean?
So the state would essentially come in and, and literally smother us out of our own projects that are ongoing, that's very, very nice of them. But you know, it's uh it's, it's so kind.
Affordable housing has been a priority for the state.
Oh, absolutely.
Huge issue and they're, 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 they're gonna make sure this gets through.
And I keep saying it, but growth is inevitable with this train coming, so it's just most smart growth, and I guess my other. Thing is, is in this would be more of a planning thing than a, a selectman thing is. Will the, will planning board create more than one option, right, to go to the townspeople with? But it has to be approved by the state first, right, so it wouldn't make sense.
Forty R, it has to be approved by.
That was my next question.
Almost thinking like if we had A, B, and C and went to the townspeople, they'd vote on which one.
Right.
The lesser of the evil, I suppose.
Right, that was my next question, it's like, let's say the town comes out and says, no, we don't want seven hundred and fifty. Um, we don't want seven hundred and fifty units, but we, we accept two hundred, is that something the state would come back and say, okay? Or that, just a, a fight that we have to.
Yeah, I don't think so, we'd have to meet, we'd have to meet the requirements, but um. Yeah, I do wanna say that, you know, before we even get to town meeting with the district. We wanna make sure we had the public outreach, even before the public hearing, we wanna make sure, you know, the community is involved, you know, this could be a very big change for the town and. People wanna know what's going on and, and give their input, so.
Well, if you, you need any help from us to get the message out, let us know, cause this is gonna be one of those um. Hard to swallow moments for the town, um there's pros and cons of everything that we do in town, this is, you know, one could argue there's pros and cons on this.
Right, of course.
Um, just the impact study alone for traffic in schools is concerning, but you know, I look forward to see what they have to, to offer us and we'll go from there.
Thank you, um so that's really all I had for you, I don't know if you guys have any other questions for me, um. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
As always, Victoria, thank you.
Well done, as always, appreciate it.
Very good, and I think there's a lot going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have your hands full, you must be busy.
Yes, I am, but it's a good busy, I, it's gonna be really exciting to see from like. Applying for the grants and then seeing like project implementation, implementation and seeing the positive changes, I'm excited.
Absolutely.
And I think they collaborate together, right, like all these, the, the master plan, you'll get feedback that will help you with the MBTA communities and the forty R. So all, working them all together, you're gonna get a lot of information.
Definitely all connects.
Great. Alright, I'll see you tomorrow at the master plan. Alright, so moving on, now we take over personnel for um.
Alright, let's do some personnel actions here. Item general number eleven, discussion of whether to put the following appointments. A, Blessing Rogers as Board of Register effective four one twenty twenty three through three thirty one twenty twenty six. B, Stephen Tripp to Planning Board effective four eighteen twenty twenty three, annual town election in twenty twenty four. C, Charles Sullivan to Master Plan Committee Conservation Commission Representative, effective four twenty four twenty twenty three through six thirty twenty twenty three. D, Victoria Alfaro Duran as Serpent Joint Transportation Planning Group, JTPG, Free Town Designee. There's an E and an F, yes, there is, Deborah E, Deborah E Petty, Deborah L Petty, excuse me. As Serpent Joint Transportation Planning Group, JTPG, Free Town Designee, alternate. And F, Alyssa Trivers as part-time signal operator, trainee, effective four twenty five twenty twenty three through six thirty twenty twenty three. Any discussions, concerns, or comments?
Nope.
No. Alright, I entertain the motion to appoint all listed personnel A through F, item general eleven. Uh effective immediately on the dates provided.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving on, item general number twelve will be tabled. As new information has come forward for our town council, and this will be added to a, an additional or future meeting.
Alright, awesome, thank you, so from notes, uh so now board. And uh Board of Parks Commission, so Jared?
Sure, uh item, uh agenda item number thirteen, discussion and vote on whether to open. The beach gate on May first and close on October first yearly. Um so I know that there's been issues before as far as like when in, um when we open it, because it was. Wasn't it, it was like we were opening, the people complained we were opening it after the holiday.
Yeah, it was a memorial day. The last week in May, yeah.
Yeah.
So. Just because it's, it's been warm, right?
Yeah.
And then some people wanna fish, I know, and then I think the later season was the football, they wanna be able to go in there and park, I think.
And so you get some October days that are nice to go.
Absolutely.
I have no problem with this, I mean, I can't, it's, it's not like the boat ramp where we have to worry about. You know, getting staffing for that, right, um so I don't see a.
Yeah, I don't see a downside to opening, I, I don't, so.
As far as the staff for the bow ramp, you know, there's a third one being, w- well, should be hired sooner, sooner than later, the uh applications are in. So discussion previously was that we add, every so often add somebody to the beach, if there's, like, if there's an event or something. Open and close the gate, so that's just for discussion down the road, but um having a third person could, could alleviate that.
I'm cool with it.
Alright, great, so um any further discussion on it?
No.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion that um. We open the beach gates on May first and close them on October first yearly.
Make that motion?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, great.
Should have like a select, a fishing tournament to get everybody out there. Biggest bass or pickerel wins the day.
So I think we see the sign and then we're good to go?
I'm not sure what kind of fish are in there, I'm assuming quite, quite a bit, yeah.
Lot of perch, lot of perch, some cat, I don't actually know, catfish.
That'd be nice, do some noodling.
There's pickle.
Pickle?
Yeah, down, especially down towards where it's up into Assawam, sit down that way, this is called Snake River over there.
Oh, I went to that, uh Snake Brook Creek. Yeah, that's all I catch all the, is pickerel. That's a nice little area.
Those are fun to catch.
Yeah.
Then they fight you, they fight you.
It's kinda sad, I don't, I haven't fishing so long.
Are we too late to take it back up? My kids, my, my, my son, uh my third, third oldest is three, or. Third youngest, I don't know what it is. Right, yeah, he's just, I tell you, every time he goes out, he catches something, it could be a, a dry lake bed, he will pull something out. I don't, I don't get it. It's great to see, but frustrating as a fisherman myself. Henry, uh signature's getting sloppier and sloppier.
Oh dude, so bad.
Yeah, mine's connecting now.
Yeah, mine just.
Yeah, there's just nothing about that, it's too freaking.
I've done the C and the L myself, so I've changed it so many times.
I wanna go back.
Only one thing trying to, right?
As a selectman, what my signature looked like versus now.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sure it's all public record from the day you signed up, or signed your.
I saw you weren't signing it, so I figured I might as well tell you the same thing again.
Should give this to him, but there you go, put that, put that on your wall. Congratulate Debbie being on another committee.
What's that?
Congratulate Deb for being on another committee.
She can create wallpaper.
She's an alternate, that's right.
Create wallpaper with everything that she can charge.
If it's wrong, it's probably my fault.
I don't see you on these.
I didn't vote yes on it.
Oh.
So.
Got it.
You did a great job, she really does. Well prepared, knows her stuff.
Yeah, someone who gets nervous about it, she does really well, I remember she was saying how nervous she was the last time and she's just like.
It's definitely, definitely one of those things, as you do more and more of them, maybe you get some much better.
Okay, good?
That's the most important one.
Alright, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.